So the Downtown Strategic Plan was paid for through a VCDP grant of $15,000 and other resources, including a $15,000 grant from National Life. And the project is complete. The final presentation was made on June 23rd by Camoin Associates. And there were 38 people present. The final report has been submitted and all of the grant funds have been received. The Downtown Committee is meeting and going over the plan's goals and strategies to determine which to pursue next. And the city has already implemented one of the strategies of the pilot program on Center The total budget for the project was $42,605. And this public hearing is the final hearing in order to close out the grant. So unless there are any other questions from anyone, I'm happy to answer anything. The plan is called Reimagine Rutland, and it can be found online on the RRA website.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any questions from members of the board? I don't believe we have anyone from the public right now.
I'll move to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Stand down. Thank you, Barbara.
Have a good evening. Hope you have a quick meeting.
Hey, Barbara.
Hey, Henry.
Henry.
Is Henry there?
Yes.
Where are the minutes?
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
I would love to tell you where the minutes are.
Okay.
Not done.
This conference will now be recorded.
Perfect. So if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Alderman Meeting. Real quick, just have one caller left who I have not identified. Is there someone on the line who's hanging out there who hasn't else known? That caller left, so never mind. So we are going to move on to minutes of the previous meeting. Clerk Heck did inform me that he was unable to get the minutes stated ahead of time. And so letting you all know that, they will be on the for approval along with these minutes. So we are going to move right outside the rail. Do we have members of the public here to address the Board on Matters, not on the agenda? I am hearing none. So we will move on to communications from the mayor. Mayor Lair.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. I have actually two items for you tonight. First one, I was able to get on the agenda. That is to ask the Board to untable the mayoral appointment to the Police Commission of Jeanette Langston. So if I could ask for that and then vote on it.
Second.
We have a motion on table and it's been seconded. All those in favor of untabling the nominee for the Police Commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So Attorney Blumer, I'm going to ask you, we can't obviously circulate a ballot box, so what would be the appropriate language to proceed with?
I think now that it's been untabled, if anybody who hasn't yet voted through that secret balloting website that I sent, if you could do so now. And traditionally, even when we have the ballot box to pass, we go on to the other business of the meeting until I've had a chance to tally them, and then I can just give you the high sign when I've got the tally and we can come back to it.
All right, that sounds great. Thank you, Attorney Blumer.
All right, so why don't I go ahead and finish my report? If I couldn't, Mr. Chair, I have one other thing. I did send you everyone a memo earlier today. This all didn't come together until late Friday after the agenda had been put together. As some of you know, we've had a vacancy on the Redevelopment Board. Recently, about a week and a half ago, I was approached by Andy Paluch, who was looking to see if there was a new way for him to serve the city. And he has been active in various circles over the last two, three years since he's come to town. And he thought the RRA Board, Redevelopment Authority Board, would be a good fit. I agreed. Actually, we had a great conversation with, I think, Andy's background and his skillset. I believe that he would make a great board member for the double R.A. He seems to have a lot of energy. He's got the time to do it, even with his new job, and I think that he would fit in nicely. So along with my memo, you had a copy. You all should have received a copy of his resume. He is not able to speak to anyone tonight. He's tied up. But he has mentioned to please ask you all to feel free to contact him anytime over the next two weeks if you so choose to table a nomination tonight. And then we can take that up in two weeks. So I would ask that you would table a nomination of Andy Paluch to be a member of the RRA Board. Please.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on table and it's been seconded. All those in favor of tabling the nomination of Andy Paluch to the RRA Board, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Alvin.
Yeah, I just have one quick other thing. I just wanted to mention that as of Friday, the first, we opened the doors to City Hall, opened to the public. It has gone off without a hitch, as far as I know. There's been quite a bit of activity downstairs, in particular in the clerk's office with the early voting going on. And I appreciate all the work that, Henry, you have done up to this point. And I know that will happen over the next, hopefully it won't go longer than 30 days, but it's going to be a high voter turnout, as I think Henry has mentioned, has been mentioned in the paper. And Henry's mentioned to me that he thought it could be upwards of 80%. And that's a phenomenal number when you think about other elections, when we've been down in the 20s and 30s. So a lot of interest, both nationally and locally, and I'm pleased about that. And just to remind everybody again, City Hall is open, regular hours, 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor Lair. Any questions for the mayor from the board? I am seeing none, I'm hearing none. Thank you, Mayor Lair.
You're welcome.
And we have the tally for Jeanette Langston. She has been confirmed to the Police Commission with a vote of 11 in favor and zero against. Congratulations, Jeanette. I don't know if you're on the call, but welcome to the Police Commission. Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda, we have one known deletion. We are going to remove Alderman Clifford's Public Works Committee report. That'll be on for the next meeting. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? I am hearing and seeing none. So we will move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Up first, we have Superintendent Peters, Raha Contract Approval, pages one through four of your packet. Superintendent Peters.
Thank you. So just a few notable changes on this contract compared to years in the past. We did add some language on COVID. We've been in connection with Raha for the last five weeks, weekly. And we agreed to 130 hours. Typically, they would do 170, with the notion that if they need more, we will happily supply that to them. So I'm asking for the Board to approve the sign-offs from myself and the mayor.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So a motion to suspend the rules and it's seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval of the contract between the City of Rutland and Raha in regards to the Giorgio Di Arena ice rental.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. We have a motion that's been seconded to approve the Raha contract with the city. Is any discussion or debate possible? I am hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Superintendent Peters.
Thank you.
Up next, we have City Clerk Heck. A request setting public hearings for the CSJ bond. This is page five of your packet. Clerk Heck.
Thank you, President Wickham. I just, I'm requesting of the Board if you could please set a couple of public hearings. This is mandatory for the bonds. Question that's on the ballot for November 3rd. It's part of the criteria that we need to have established. So if I could politely just ask for the November 19th meeting and a November 2nd meeting at 6:30. I'm thinking, I'm just not sure whether it's potential we could be amongst one another's and stuff. We may need that time if we are, just to educate the public. I know it's a big educational process out there and stuff. But if not, that's what I was thinking was 6:30, and that's what I have placed on the morning. So I would really try and keep it at that time to make sure that that happens. But if someone could just move those two dates at that time, I would greatly appreciate it.
Second. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to clarify that it's not October, it's not October 19th.
Right. October 19th, yep.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and it's seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And could I get a motion to set the public hearings for the bond article for October 19th, 2020 at 6:30 p.m. and November 2nd, 2020 at 6:30 p.m.?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any debate or discussion on the matter? Alderman Garusa.
Yeah, I just got a message on my computer that something to do with the audio or whatever. I heard nothing about what just was voted on. What was that? What'd you guys just vote on?
Alderman Garusa, what we're looking to do is set the public hearings for the CSJ bond. So we want to have it on October 19th and November 2nd prior to our Alderman meeting. And that's what we're opening at right now.
All right. And now you're setting the date. Okay, thank you.
Good thing. Any special debate from the House? Hearing and seeing none. But all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Clerk Heck. And we are on now to Zoning Administrator Kelly, City-Owned Properties Sale Recommendation, 41 Baxter. This is pages six through nine of your packet.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a recommendation from the City-Owned Properties Committee. We had put a number of properties out for application, to receive applications, offers to purchase. This one, 41 Baxter, had a couple of offers. In reviewing those carefully against the goals of our program, the decision was made or, yeah, the decision was made to recommend Kimberly and Matthew Johnson. They own 42 Cleveland, which is behind 41 Baxter. The committee went the extra step to meet with them and to try to really understand how what their plan would be, would interact with the frontage along Baxter Street so that it wasn't just a, you know, a high fence or a high shrubbery put around that disrupted the sort of feel of that neighborhood. And so they have agreed to set the gate back a ways. They're adding some motion sensor lights so that there's security. And they placed the gate in a location that was recommended by the police chief in order to discourage any cut-through traffic or nuisance on the backside of the lot on 41 Baxter. So that is the recommendation from the committee, is to allow the sale to go through to the Johnsons. Because this is different than other properties we sell, where there's a large investment being made in the development plan, and this is really a matter of gates and lights, we're asking that there be a stipulation put on the sale, that the owners would keep this plan in effect for a period of five years. And if there was to be a change, that it be done through a submission to the zoning administrator, who could review it and make sure that whatever changes they're proposing continue to be in keeping with the goals of the program. So a little different than some other ones that we've done, but that's the reason why we're asking for that timeframe. And the sale, the purchase offer was for $5,000. And at the bottom of the memo, there's some language that is typically used if you choose to move forward with the recommendation.
A motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move that the Board authorized the sale of 41 Baxter Street to Kimberly and Matthew Johnson for the purchase price of $5,000 pursuant to 6-2 of the Rutland City Charter and to further authorize the mayor to sign all sale-related documents, including the covenant referred to in the memo provided by Tara, to be prepared by the city attorney.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded. Alderman Davis.
So Tara, if I may, I have a little bit of a concern, just from the aesthetic piece of it being turned around onto that street, especially between those two properties, which are well kept. Has the abutters been notified of this issue, the properties that sit on Baxter that would be on each side of this?
Yeah, when we market the properties, the steps we take are, we put a sign on the property itself to say it's for sale. We mail out a notice to everyone that abuts the property so that they're aware of the sale, that the sale is happening. And then, you know, we do, and then we market it through other channels, like notification to people that have asked to be notified, and we try to get the newspaper to cover it, things of that nature. So in this case, yes, that was, those steps were taken.
Right. I understand that piece. I'm asking, but now that a decision's been made that it's going to be a fence in a driveway, have the abutters, are they aware of what's going to be done there?
Oh, sorry. No, one property is vacant at the moment. That's the one that's at 39. And the one at 41A was another person that had submitted an application. The reason their plan was not chosen boils down to what their plan was going to be, which I can further explain if you'd like to, but.
That's okay. I just, so have you seen, other than the drawing that we have in the packet, have you seen what the fence and et cetera is going to look like?
They were talking about a low fence, not like a, you know, six-foot-high solid fence. They were not talking about that. They were talking about something that was more transparent than that. They hadn't picked out the particular style. So if that's important, if you want to give some direction to them, they're very open to direction, and we're very receptive to anything we had to say. The committee had not commented on fence style, so I didn't give them any direction around that. But if this Board wants to do so, I could go that far.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Mattis.
Oh, thank you. I was just going to say, I was very happy with the Johnsons. I went down to look at the property and talk about their plans with them briefly. And I'm confident that they're going to make it just as nice as they can based on the information that they received. They're really taking care to preserve the character of the neighborhood and to make it much nicer.
Alderman Gillum.
Yes. We know the neighbors pretty well, and obviously on the property he's on now, it's a very small house. He really doesn't have a lot of room because he's in a shared driveway on that first gate up there. So I think this is going to be a good thing for him and Mrs. Johnson, because they'll pick up a garage, so they can get some of that clutter on their property into the garage and clean up the property. So I think this is definitely a good move for them to keep the property looking good. So I'm in favor of this, obviously.
Alderman Torrey.
Thanks. Alderman Davis, I shared your concerns. I was on the City-owned Property when this first came up. And the way this is structured, I had a lot of concerns, a lot of the committee had a lot of concerns. And so we went the extra mile. I wasn't able to attend this last meeting where they made the final decision, but we went the extra mile of involving the police chief, going down there and looking and engaging them in a conversation because of our concern about the neighborhood and the community and making sure that, you know, it was going to keep kind of the aesthetics that would make it feel like a neighborhood, because we were concerned about kind of that front-back thing. So I think they're going to do, I think it's from the plans and from my conversations about it, it seems like it's going to come through and be nice. So I'm supportive of it.
If I may, one more question, Mr. Terry. So Tara, what if, I mean, what if, Billy, I don't know these folks, but Billy's talking about stuff all over their yard because they have no place to store. That makes me more nervous, to be god's honest with you, not more comfortable. So what if it becomes a storage problem? And the folks that are abutting it on Baxter Street or traveling up and down, having, you know, that that becomes an issue? So I'm not sure what the process is. I just want to make sure that it's, you know, a wooden fence gets built and not maintained or something to that effect, and then it becomes a problem. That's my concern.
Yeah, I hear the concern, and I struggle with how to control that unless we go, you know, unless we add some additional language into any covenant that you, that we elect to put in place. Because from a straightforward, like ordinance standpoint, from, you know, what we have in effect that would normally be at play, you know, as you likely know, there's not a lot of control over, you know, folks just having their own stuff in their yards. So, yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to either ask that it be, that it should be a solid fence of some sort so that that's less visible from the street, or we should put in something additional around what the expectation is of the city in conveying the land.
I just wanted to comment that I think if we all agree that this is an appropriate use of the space and to sell it to the Johnsons, then at that point, if this scenario happens that Sharon's talking about, then we would need to rely on the building and zoning ordinance that we already have in place. And I guess Tara just explained it better than I did, but yeah. I don't think there's, if we agree that this is the proper use of the space enough to sell it, then there's nothing we can do other than rely on our existing ordinances to keep it in good shape afterward.
Is there any additional discussion or debate? Alderman Gillum.
Yes, I didn't want to put something in people's ear that they're not good property owners. They are good property owners, because if you understand that house was a small house, and they've got a family of four in there, so they're running out of room. So they got stuff on their front porch, but it's not junk, it's just good stuff, but it's just, you know, not organized. And I think if they get this extra piece of property and they get that two-bay garage, that's going to help them store some of that stuff that they need to have stored. And they'll get them a bigger piece of property to work with. They don't have to do the shared driveway anymore, they can use their own driveway in the backside of Baxter Street. So I think it's a good move for them, and it keeps the property looking good, as long as they keep the ordinance, stay within your ordinance and keep them. I think a short fence might not work. I think you need to play with that, Tara. I think that's up to you. I think they might have to put something taller, because we have some kids in that neighborhood who likes to climb fences. And I think a three-foot fence is not high enough.
Got it.
Is there, Alderman Mattis?
Well, I think the thinking behind a lower fence was that it was going to preserve the character of the neighborhood, make it more like a front yard instead of a backyard. I think, as I recall, they were talking about a picket fence. It didn't seem, it just, the hit I got from the committee that we didn't want it to be blocked off like a backyard. So I would hesitate to change the language to require a tall fence.
Is there any additional discussion with Alderman Gillum?
I agree with Alderman Mattis on that situation. I think on the front end, I think you need to put a picket fence. I think it would work. And then on the sides, maybe a taller, whatever. But I would leave it up to Tara to make it pleasing to the neighborhood. I think she has the authority and the power to do that. So whatever works and maintains the property is the best way to go.
Thank you. Is there Alderman Garusa?
I don't know anything about this. I don't know the landowner. It's a tough break for the guy. He buys a piece of property and there's 11 people telling him what to do with it. I mean, things have gone through my mind, like nobody's mentioned trees and shrubs and turning the garage doors to the other side so he can access it from his own yard and through the garage and maybe stay off Baxter Street, cut the traffic down. But certainly, I don't know, Tara, I haven't had a chance to meet her with, I haven't had a chance to meet a lot of people yet with this virus, but maybe they could go sit down and make up a plan and come back to us with something that's simple. And I think Alderman Davis is absolutely right. She's lived on Baxter Street a long time, and what's good on one end of the street's good on the other end. And the very, very valid issue of how he does that. And we're not picking on the guy. It's his land, he can do what he wants with it. But maybe someone like, you know, Mr. Gincoll or somebody who's done a lot of these could give them some suggestions too. But shrubbery could be an option. And like I said, putting the garage doors on the other side, and he could come in from Cleveland Avenue and right into his garage and not have to come onto Baxter. I don't know. I'm not trying to tell him what to do, just throwing some suggestions into the kitty here. But I think maybe we, to feel comfortable, maybe we need to give him another few weeks and see what Tara can come back with. So that's my two cents, but thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Humphrey, I saw your hand. All right, Alderman Humphrey's all good. Is there any further discussion or debate from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. We do have a motion to authorize the sale of 41 Baxter Street to Kimberly and Matthew Johnson, the price of $5,000 pursuant to 6-2 of the Rutland City Charter and to further authorize the mayor to sign all sale-related documents, including the covenant referred to in this memo, as prepared by the city attorney. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
All right, because we do not vote, we do have to do a roll call, so I'll allow Clerk Heck to take that now. to take that note. Alderman Garuso.
I will say no.
Alderman Humphrey.
Sorry, I thought I understood what we were voting on until Alderman Garuso said no. Could you remind me? We're voting on the sale of the property, correct? Okay, yes.
All right, yep. Alderman Ryan.
Yes.
Alderman Torey.
Yes.
Alderman Talbot.
Yes.
Alderman Mattis.
Yes.
Alderman Gillum.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman DePoy.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
No.
Eight passes. All right, eight in favor to oppose, motion passes. All right. Tara Kelly, you are up again, pages 10 through 12, City-owned Properties Time Extension Request.
Great, thank you. So when we sell these properties, there's a de-discretion placed in the records that states that the development plan has to be completed as submitted and approved by the committee. And the way that we indicate that things have been completed is that the building inspector ultimately signs off on it as does the zoning administrator. Okay, so the development plans include a timeframe for when they predicted, how long it would take them to complete the projects. Two of the property owners have come back to me realizing that they were running up against those timeframes and asked for extensions. There probably should be two separate votes, but one is for 80 Crescent Street with the owner Paul Boyer, and he has submitted a letter with his reasoning for why he needs an extension and the timeframe he's asking for. And then the second one is 62 Cleveland Avenue owned by Michael and Catherine Heatley, who have started their project but need to continue on with the second phase of it. So those are the two requests that are there. And initially, we asked for timeframes and we're, are holding people to them to extend because we didn't want to sell the properties and then have them continue to lie in the state that they were in. In both of these cases, some improvement has begun. At the very least, 80 Crescent looks better from the outside than it did prior to now. And at 62 Cleveland, they actually have been inhabiting the building on the first floor, but it's the second unit on the second floor that needs to be completed. So I put that forth for your consideration as to whether or not the board would accept these requests to extend their timeframes. If so, then we end up putting some paperwork in the record to reflect that change, and it allows us to, for them to continue on.
Alderman Mattis.
Thank you. Tara, I'm in favor of granting both of these requests, but I'm wondering, what would happen if we didn't grant these requests? What, you know, what would happen then?
Yeah, I know. So if they don't complete the development plan and we don't sign off on them, it puts a cloud on the title, at the very least. Maybe Matt Attorney Blumer would have a more specific answer to your question. I just know that it, at some level, you know, puts a cloud on their title and would call into question whether or not they were allowed to sell or lease it in the future. Matt Attorney Blumer, do you have anything?
I do, but it may be better for executive session or if I just send it to anybody who's interested afterwards.
That would be fine with me if you just sent it out.
Okay.
I'll move to suspend the rule.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
So I'll move to grant the extension for a timeframe completing the development for 80 Crescent Street in Rutland.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion.
Point of order, point of order, point of order. We're doing one at a time, am I correct? Thank you.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded, and this is just on the extension of 80 Crescent Street right now. Is there any discussion or debate on property at 80 Crescent Street? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the timeline extension for 80 Crescent Street, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for the approval of the extension for completion of the development plan for 62 Cleveland Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, for the approval of the extension for 62 Cleveland Avenue. Is there any discussion or debate? Alderman Gillum.
This is another neighbor of ours on Cleveland Avenue and has done some substantial amount of work. They're property owners who live on the property, and he's done a very good job of doing what he can, obviously, through Colby, getting the property to a level where it's respectable. And he's moving right along. He's doing most of the work himself, and he's a good neighbor. So I think we need to approve this to keep these people all and moving right along. And I would, I would support this, for sure.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Is there any further discussion or debate to 62 Cleveland Avenue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of providing a timeline extension to 62 Cleveland Avenue, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tara. And you are up again, zoning administrator Kelly, for Planning Commission Referral, Zoning Amendment, pages 13 through 16 of your packet.
Great, thank you again. So the planning commission has been looking at the existing zoning bylaws, so the ones that are in place now and preparing some amendments to that. It began with the discussion around the College of St. Joseph campus and the need to make, bring into effect the vision that was created in the master plan for those properties. And once they started looking at that, they thought, well, if we're gonna go through the steps of amendment, there are at least some other cleanup things we could do with the existing bylaws that would bring us into compliance with Chapter 117, and then some additional items that they also have built into this draft. So the processes that the planning commission puts this forward to the Board of Aldermen and for all of you to take the steps you would like to consider it, ultimately resulting in a public hearing that's necessary per statute before any adoption could occur, assuming that it proceeds in that manner. So the memo from Barbara, she used some language that I think she says is pretty standard to what she's done before, letting you know the planning commission held a public hearing on September 23rd. She's attached the minutes from that hearing and would like the Alderman to either, well, she's suggesting that you set a required public hearing for November 16th and then refer the draft amendment to Charter and Ordinance Committee. But of course, that's for you all to decide if that's how you want to proceed.
Alderman Mattis.
Well, I'll move to refer to Charter and Ordinance.
Second.
First.
All right, we have, Alderman Garuso.
Yeah, I support this motion. I think it's exactly what we do, but I was doing a little homework since this motion comes, and I, maybe Tara can help me. And I don't know her. I wouldn't know if she walked up to me, I don't think. In the last couple of motions here, and a couple of us remember Arthur, the late Arthur Crowley screaming at the top of his lungs, here are some words that we've dealt with tonight. Garage, fence, roof lines, gravel, what else? Stairway, old carpet, renovations, landscape, decks, siding, porch. Why are the Board of Aldermen dealing with these? Back when Eric Crowley was here, we had a zoning board. Why is the Board of Aldermen dealing with that? What's, the motion before us is what the board is for, of things like charter and ordinance items and things like that. Why have we been dealing with porches, decks, fences, and stuff like that? When did that change? I just would like to know.
Sure. If it's appropriate, I'll answer if you'd like.
Go ahead, please. I don't know why we've been talking about fences and all this. I feel bad for the guy with the fence thing now because I don't have any experience with any of this stuff. I'm not a zoning person. I got in the Board of Aldermen to build businesses, fill stores up, and help the city not decide on fences and garages, porches, and decks. Go ahead, please. How did we get in this?
Sure. So there was an initiative put forward a couple of years back when the city had a long list of properties in our possession that had largely resulted, were largely the result of tax sales where people did not bid on the properties, and we needed a method for disposing of them. So the last two items came from the City-owned Properties Committee because at that point in time when we had something like 30 properties on the list, the system that got set up was for this committee, which is basically an ad hoc type of committee, to consider applications that came before us for people that wanted to purchase city-owned properties, but that the ultimate disposition of, and sale and transfer of those properties, things that were related to the real estate of those properties, was under the authority of the Board of Aldermen. So that's, that's why those two things came before you.
But if I could ask, why can't things like that come to us when the fences and the garages and the decks and all that stuff's already been decided on? So we don't have to, we're not, you know, I said, we don't do that stuff. We didn't do that when Eric Crowley said just that back then. He said, we don't, we don't work with this stuff. All we do is, you know, the legal stuff, we do the charter and ordinance stuff, we do the technical, this kind of stuff. We don't, we don't do that. And that's why I'm wondering why, like I said, I feel bad for the fence guy on Cleveland and Baxter Street because I don't know if it's right or not to put a fence all the way around a piece of property. I would have thought the zoning people would have figured that out.
Alderman Garuso, if I could jump in here. It might be good for you and Senator Kelly to connect offline, just so you can get a sense of what's going on. Right, what we have before us right now is just a simple referral of this matter to the Charter and Ordinance Committee.
Okay, if you're with us, I support this, Mr. Chairman. And I'm sorry, I just, that was my, for instance, was these other things didn't seem to me that they belong on the board. This is perfectly made for us. Thank you, Tara, for your time. Thank you. I'm not mad, I'm just confused. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman Garuso. Is there any other discussion or debate related to the referral to Charter and Ordinance? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of referring this matter to Charter and Ordinance Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And I move that we set the required public hearing for the amendment to the zoning bylaws for November 16th at 6:45 PM.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, it's set to required hearings November 16th at 6:45 PM. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tara. I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, moving on. We do not have any reports of standing committees. Alderman Clifford will be on for our next meeting. We have no reports of select committees. We have nothing under reports of representatives. We have nothing under petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication. We do not have any items under the Board of Control Commissioners. So is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Alderman Humphrey.
Thanks. I just wanted to remind everyone that I warned General Committee for the Tuesday at 5:30 for the agenda item of discussion of in-person Board of Aldermen meetings.
I'm sorry, when is the meeting scheduled?
Thursday, at 5:30.
This, tomorrow at 5:30?
Somebody's phone's ringing.
Right.
Thursday, the 8th. Did you get that?
I didn't get the warning, that's why I was asking.
No, I don't know. I meant to check in with Henry just to make sure he got it. But I'll make sure that, yeah, I'll double-check with him to make sure it goes out, but it'll be Thursday.
Thank you, Alderman Humphrey. Is there any other unfinished business to come before the board? Alderman Gillum.
A question for the clerk. I might be confused because someone asked me a question the other day. Is there three ways to vote, am I correct? You can drop the ballot off at City Hall, or vote at the ward. What was the third way to vote? Mail-in?
Well, there's, so you're receiving your ballot from the Secretary of State.
Right, got it.
If you receive that ballot and you vote it, you can return it to City Hall, you can return it to the ballot boxes outside of City Hall, or you can return it to your polls the day of election on November 3rd.
Thank you. That makes it very clear.
Is there any other unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? Alderman Garuso.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Back, I don't know how many years ago, it was a beautiful Sunday morning, got out of church and was going downtown when I saw a beautiful train car. And I'm not a train buff, so I don't know exactly what it is being lifted off the tracks, put next to the West Street Cemetery and down by the Farmers Market Building there. And I understood it was a gift to Rutland. And today, while editing a local newspaper that's coming out tomorrow, there's some pictures in there, the fire department and one of the folks from the zoning or building, zoning department in the city was nailing plywood on it. Well, it looks like we're getting some vandalism on that. And I'm not sure who owns it or whatever, but I'd like to make a motion to, yeah, I personally, I think DPW, because I, my suggestion would be putting a chain-link fence around it until we still can decide what we're gonna do about it. It seems like we're getting more and more damage inside that. And I don't know where the money would come from. It seems we always have some pop-up somewhere, but it would seem to me one of the cheapest ways to protect that because all I have to is get a fire started and that, and it's all wooden, and that may be the end of it. But it's a wonderful, wonderful gift to Rutland's heritage and its train heritage. And they're boarding it up, and I, there was a bunch of the firemen were pounding, I mean, from the picture, there's only a couple of them. They're pounding plywood on it, and it just seems sad to see something boarded up. It looks like an abandoned building, and it's just such a piece of history. So I'd like to make a motion to Public Works, I guess would be my committee unless someone else asks someone something different to do what we do to protect their train. Hello? Mr. President, this is the mayor. I'm listening in. If I could say something to that issue, there was about a week and a half ago or a week ago, somebody had broken into that. I just, I found out about it the other day. We have secured it, and ironically enough, about a week before that, I had been in contact with some board members down at the Farmers Food Market who had originally made plans to put a covering over the train car, over the rail car, and get some security there on it. So it's being boarded up for security.
So, uh, it's being boarded up for security reasons. But, uh, we currently have $21,000 in a bank account, uh, down in the treasurer's office. It's, uh, been earmarked for, uh, that covering and, um, hopefully for whatever security we can, uh, we can put in down there. It's been a long time coming. Uh, there's been, it's, it has started and stopped by, uh, volunteers who have, um, wanted to help out and, uh, they got started on, on the, on the covering, put the footings in and then for whatever reason it stopped. But, uh, there is a new, uh, new, uh, chairman of the board down there. He seems, uh, absolutely committed to getting this done. He said he's got, uh, a slew of, uh, volunteers that he's ready to get, uh, to work down there. And, um, I'm, uh, hoping, I'm hopeful that that's exactly what's going to happen. If it doesn't within the next couple of weeks, uh, we're going to try to make, uh, some other arrangements to, uh, have security down there, either motion lights or, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, process in place of the, so the, uh, the, uh, the train car, the rail car does not get, um, suffer any more damage. It is a beautiful, uh, um, beautiful rail car. It was donated by Vermont Rail Systems. Uh, I was, uh, I watched the whole thing be set over there. Um, uh, it just needs to be, um, covered and secured. Uh, and I, I think that hopefully that that's what's going to happen, um, in the next couple of months. But I will keep the board apprised of, uh, of, uh, the progress or lack thereof, uh, going forward. Does that help?
It helps. I just was going to say that, uh, I'm president of St. Joseph Cemetery. We put in probably 500 feet of chain link fence up there and it cost us, uh, I'm going to say less than $10,000. So you would not need that much fence and it would obviously cost a lot less than that. Just throwing it out, Mr. Mayor, the, the, you know, to keep them away from it or from getting in it was all I was concerned about. Yes, it'd be nice to have it covered and keep it out of the weather. But it just, it's so sad that, that, that it can't be left alone, you know? And it's, it's, uh, it's, it's just a beautiful thing. But if, um, you don't want a motion, then I'm, I will withdraw from making my motion. That's all. I just would love to see it safe, safe more than anything. And I guess I won't go any further than if you got it, you got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to adjourn if you'd like.
Uh, Alderman Gillum, I have him first. Alderman Gillum, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to inform Alderman Garuso that there is plans on the wall at the food center on the back doors. You come in the back door, they got all the blueprints and the plans right there in that back door area. I suggest you go there and take a look and see what they have planned for that. It looks very nice once they get this project off the ground. As the mayor says, it's $20,000 sitting there to do that. It's just need the volunteer base. I believe they will get that done this year or next spring. So if you want to take a look at the plans, they're right there in the wall.
I, I don't need to look at the plans, Bill. I just would like to see it done and whatever we got to do to get it done, that's all. I'm just saying it's meanwhile, it's getting damaged. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, are there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 So opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, everyone.